All right, Jay, we're good to go.
Thank you for joining the Boston's only commission public hearing which is being held virtually to ensure the continued safety of its public staff members and the Boston's only commissioners. The open meeting I requires I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be advised that an audio and video recording of this meeting is being made. Before we go any further, like to have the interpreters introduce themselves.
Terrific. We will start with Nam and then go to David.
Oh, hello everyone. I'm Nam. I'm the Vietnamese interpreter.
Hi, my name is David and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. Bienvenidos a todos. I will interpret at the continuation of what the president said. My name is Jerry Hulley. Let us welcome the Bienvenida la Comisión de Zonificación de Boston. In the public 17th of July, we are here together with the commissioners. And we want to tell them that this meeting will be recorded and later on will be moved to the location that corresponds to the information of the project. Also, we want to know that we will talk about the interpretation of languages. At the bottom, in a moment, the channels of interpretation will be enabled. They will talk about Cantonese, Mandarin, Spanish, Vietnamese, Creole, Haitian, and Cabo Rodeano, so that you can listen to the language of your preference for this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Next, we'll go to Horan and then Zenilda.
Hello, everyone. My name is Horan and I'm your Mandarin interpreter for today's meeting. I'm your interpreter for today's meeting.
Hello, good morning. This is Anilda and I'll be your key word interpreter for this morning's meeting. Hello, everyone. My name is Anilda and I'm the Spanish interpreter for Cabo Rodeano during the reunion of today. So, this has informed me that there was a big event that was there for the reunion of today, the Commission of Zoning of Boston. And we were offering services of interpretation for Vietnamese, Spanish, Mandarin, Cabo Rodeano, Cantonese, Creole, Haitian. If you think it would be a good reunion, we will use the language of preference. If you click on the icon of the globe that is on the bottom of the screen, we will solve the language that you would like to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Joan and finish off with Kristi.
Cyrus, good morning, everyone. My name is Joan. I'll be your Cantonese interpreter for today's meeting. Hello, everyone. I'm the Cantonese interpreter for today's meeting. One minute later, the translator will activate the translation service. You will see the icon of the sun at the bottom of the screen. Select the translation tool to choose the language you want to listen to, which is Cantonese. Then you will hear my first and last translation. Thank you.
Well, Cyrus.
We're waiting on Kristi here.
Hello, my name is Kristi Bellaby. I'm the Haitian Creole interpreter for today's meeting. Everyone, my name is Kristi Bellaby. I'm the Creole interpreter for the reunion of today. For the Commission of Boston. And if you are ready, let's do the reunion of today. In the month of August, Cantonese, Mandarin, Creole, Spanish, Portuguese, and with Creole Haitian. I will search for the button on the left, which is on the screen, and I will tap it. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Terrific. Thank you. And the interpretation channels are now open. So, back to you, Jay.
Thank you, Cyrus. At this point, we'll take a roll call of zoning commissioners. Joe Hatton?
Present.
Michael Nichols?
Present.
Michael Demela?
Present.
Nelson Arroyo? Nelson?
Nelson is not here.
Okay, David Ma?
Present.
Drew Lef? Drew?
Muted, Drew.
You're muted, Drew.
Present.
Aisha Miller?
Present.
And Jay Hurley. I don't believe, is Ricardo here? On the door? Dory? Okay.
I'm here.
Dory.
I'm sorry, Madory.
No worries.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
I got some bum information. Send me the full list next time, Jeff. We'll figure it out. This is a hearing before the Boston zoning commission to consider a petition for the approval of MAP amendment application number 783. The development plan for Plan Development Area number 154, 180 Western Ave. The hearing was duly advertised June 27th in the Boston Herald. And the Boston's only commission hearing our petitions. Proponents will first present their case and are subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in our position at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting or would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name and full name, any group affiliation, announce whether you are a supporter or opposed to petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I will advise you when you have 30 seconds remain. At that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents will allow a brief five to 10 minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Camille Platt and I'm a project manager at the Boston Planning Department. We're here before you to present the proposed Plan Development Area number 154 located at 180 Western Avenue in the Alston neighborhood of Boston. The proposed project site consists of approximately 1.2 acre tract and currently comprises multiple vacant commercial buildings and surface parking lots. The project proposes to demolish the existing buildings on the site and to construct a pedestrian oriented mixed use building, including residential uses, ground floor retail, restaurant and service uses. The proposed project comprises an approximately seven story building containing about 200,000 square feet of GFA, including residential space. That includes approximately 274 units, ground floor retail, restaurant, service and accessory spaces, shared indoor and outdoor amenity spaces for residents. Served by parking located within the building as well as bike parking. The retail component of the proposed project will be located along Western Avenue and North Harvard Street. The Article 80 process for this project began in July of 2020. During this process, seven joint Harvard-Alston Public and Task Force meetings were held. One comment letter in support was received from a member of the Harvard-Alston Task Force and another in opposition to date. I'll now turn it over to the development team to take you through the proposed details related to the amendment. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Peter Skirides with Samuels and Associates in Boston. We are the project proponent. In a moment, I will turn it over to Emily Paparala from Elka's Manfredi Architects to walk you through the project. Just a brief introduction, as Camille mentioned, we've been working on this project since 2020 when we first filed plans with the city and during that time, there was also a Western Avenue corridor rezoning. And so, we did pause the project to make sure that the rezoning process went forward, to make sure that our project was consistent with that rezoning effort. Pleased this morning to put forth the project in front of you with approximately 274 residential units, of which 41 are affordable units. And we are also pleased that those units are ranging from 40 to 70% of AMI. So, we've been able to stretch that to the lower end of the AMI. And in addition to that, there is neighborhood retail on the ground floor, along with substantial public realm improvements, which we'll talk about in more detail. So, we appreciate the commission hearing this project and I will turn it over to Emily Paparala from Elka's Manfredi.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and members of the commission. Next slide, please. I think there may be some BBDA slides. First?
Yeah, sorry, the BBDA slides are here. Sorry. So, good morning, Commissioners and members of the board. My name is Jason McDonald and I'll be presenting three slides on the planning and zoning context prepared by the BPDA zoning compliance team. After a multi-year planning process, the Western Avenue Corridor Study, also known as the WAC-RZ, was adopted by the BPDA Board in October 2022. Shortly thereafter, the zoning commission adopted MAP and text zoning amendments to codify the plan's land use, dimensional and public realm recommendations. The 180 Western Avenue mixed use proposal sits at the heart of the Berry Corners node of Western Avenue, a focal point of the WAC-RZ study. Staff review was also guided by citywide policies, including the Smart Utilities Checklist, the EV Readiness Policy, Complete Streets Design Guidelines, and BTD Parking Maximals and Bike Parking Guidelines. Next slide, please. In addition to the WAC-RZ plan, the 180 Western Avenue is located at the nexus of several ongoing planning initiatives. These plans informs the staff teams' understanding of the larger Austin planning context, including the Enterprise Research Campus District and Greenway Plan, ERC Plan, the Beacon Park Yard Framework Plan, the Western Ave Transit Way Planning, and the Austin Bryant Community Plan. Next slide, please. The 180 Western Avenue Proposed Plan Development Area overlay is well aligned with current underlying WAC-RZ zoning for Berry's Corner. This includes consistency with regulations for use, height, floor area ratio, open space and parking. The proponent has taken advantage of a feature of WAC-RZ that allows for a FAR bonus of two four for projects that allocate at least 17% of total residential square footage to income restricted housing that is affordable to households averaging 60% AMI. Thank you. And now I will turn it over to the development team for a more detailed presentation of their proposal.
All right. Thank you. Next slide, please. Next, please. The site is located right at the intersection, as you see, the intersection of Western Avenue and North Harvard Street. It's a significant intersection in Lower Alston because it acts as a sort of gateway to the neighborhood. And over time, it is becoming, slowly becoming this walkable neighborhood center. To the south of the site is a fine grain of primarily three family and single family residential buildings. To the north of our site is Continuum, Harvard University Stadium and Athletics Fields, Harvard Business School over here to the northeast. And along Western Ave to the east of our site is the Harvard Science and Engineering Building. New development in the area includes, to the west, Alston Lab Works, commercial and residential development at the WBZ site. To the north of us, 175 North Harvard Street and Harvard University Housing. And of course, to the east, again, the Enterprise Research Campus. So, in the context of this development and recent development like Continuum, 180 Western is consistent with the scale of Western Avenue and also, as Planning Department pointed out, compliant with the WAC-RZ guidelines. Next slide, please. Zooming into the site, this is a sort of a bird's eye view. The site is approximately 1.2 acres. You can see that it presently lends primarily to vehicular uses with a lot of surface parking, multiple curb cuts. You can see the proximity to the neighborhood to the south. But note this sort of institutional buffer, which includes a retail building called Future Cafe that cafe may be open now, a surface parking lot, and a Harvard University Office Building, which those are within the Harvard IMP boundary. Next slide, please. Existing buildings on the site include a mix of vacant, single story, commercial, retail buildings, as well as a three family residential building on Western Ave. Next slide, please. The proposed project, like Camille said, is a pedestrian oriented mixed use building, which will create active edges to really define Berry's Corner, reinforce it as a pedestrian centered square. To do this, retail frontage is maximized along Western Ave and North Harvard. You see here in the pink color. The face of the building was set back up to an additional 12 feet on Western Ave and North Harvard to create wider sidewalks and additional public realm. To the south, if you can see the label that says Bertram Street Open Space, part of the building massing was removed to create this publicly accessible, south facing open space. And the idea here is a series of open spaces, starting on Bertram Street, wrapping around North Harvard Street and continuing on to connect to the Grove and beyond. Going back to the south of the building where the yellow is, the primary entry is located along Bertram Street. There's also access to secure bike storage. And then up around on Western Ave, you can see the tag for the secondary entry. And to the right hand side of the drawing, a small parking garage is entered along Travis Street. Next slide, please. As Jason from the Planning Department pointed out, the proposed project is within the boundaries of the WAC-RZ, which was adopted in October of 2022. And it provides guidance in this area due to increased development demand. The outline, the outlines include urban design recommendations like increased setback requirements to allow for additional public realm, to allow for mobility improvements. But it also establishes higher density limits in key areas, one of which is Berry's Corner. So, you can see that the project is compliant. It's compliant with allowable uses. The density in this area is an FAR of 4.0 and as such, oh, sorry, the project is at an FAR of 4.0. And as such, no less than 17% of the residential GFA will be set aside for affordable units available to households averaging 60% of AMI. The building is seven stories. It'll be no taller than 90 feet with a lot coverage of no more than 80%. And the project includes, like Peter said, approximately 274 units, approximately 41% of which will be affordable units, up to 63 vehicles, which is a parking ratio of 0.23. Next slide, please. Looking at the building along Western Avenue, the massing is a sweeping gesture. It sort of follows the curvature of where Western Ave turns into North Harvard Street. The ground floors, you can see here with the umbrellas and activity is meant to be continuous along these streets. It'll include operable storefronts wherever possible to really engage the cafe zone. The building is five stories of brick with two stories of metal shingles above. All of these materials in a warm, light colored, neutral palette. Next slide, please. We're moving now to the south side of the building on Bertram Street. You can see that the building is differentiated here. It's still brick and metal shingle, but differentiated by color and composition. So, unlike a continuous gesture along Western Ave, the building is broken into three parts to better reflect the scale of the neighborhood to the south. The color palette is a mix of red brick to evoke a more traditional sensibility. We learned through many conversations with the neighborhood that brick is very much a preferred material. We also show smaller window sizes to create a, both to create variety, but also again to acknowledge that scale of the residential neighborhood to the south. To the left hand side of the drawing, you see the building that steps down where the primary entry to the building is and where the Bertram Street open space is. That step also creates light and air between the two parts of the building. Next slide, please. At North Harvard Street, the building was set back an additional 10 to 12 feet to accommodate that additional public realm. You're looking at a section cutting through North Harvard Street pointing north towards Western Ave, which depicts these new elements and each of their dimensions. And if I start from left to right, you have a new curbed bike lane buffer, a five foot bike lane. I think the dimensions are a little bit different here, but it's a five foot bike lane. We have a frontage zone that includes plantings, excuse me, a furnishing zone that includes trees, street trees, plantings and bike lanes and a seven foot sidewalk. I apologize, the numbers are not showing up correctly in this slide. There's an interstitial zone that you can see here of plantings and benches. And that creates this promenade space. It creates publicly accessible seating. To the right of that is the cafe zone along the frontage of the building, which is all the retail use you saw in pink on the plan. And finally, on the upper left of this drawing is a vignette showing the new clock and the display, which will highlight an existing nearby historic mile marker. These elements were incorporated as a result of conversations we had with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. The proposed project really improves the pedestrian experience with new place making elements, wide sidewalks, new landscaping, plantings and lighting. There's two accessible, two publicly accessible open spaces, again, the promenade on North Harvard Street and the open space on Bertram Street. Together, they provide over 100 linear feet of new bench seating. New trees provide aesthetic value, shade, which reduces the urban heat island effect. And the continuous retail along Western Ave and North Harvard will enhance the pedestrian experience and reinforce this, this Berry's Corner as a neighborhood center. Additionally, proactive construction mitigation will be managed by a third party with established relationships to both the proponent and the neighborhood. Next slide, please. The proposed project will provide new affordable housing units, consistent with the requirements of WAC-RZ, which will be weighted towards two and three family, excuse me, two and three bedroom floor plans. The building will be all electric for the residential portion, meaning there may possibly be gas cooking in some of the ground floor restaurants. And it'll target lead gold level certifiability as well as passive health certification. The design includes a solar ready roof should the installation of solar be viable upon future study. And finally, in terms of transportation and mobility, this project brings new bike lanes, wider sidewalks, a raised crosswalk at Bertram Street. We're eliminating six curb cuts. We've got a low parking ratio. The addition of a 19 dock blue bike station and secure bike storage for at least a minimum of one bike for every unit. This infrastructure will significantly enhance comfort and safety for cyclists and pedestrians. Thank you.
Does that conclude everything?
That's everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will you take the presentation down, please? Why am I not getting all about this?
And anybody would like to offer testimony for this public hearing, please raise your hand now so that we can call on.
Actually, Jeff, can I just ask Emily a quick question?
Of course.
I just had a quick question on, I had seen in the package that we received entrances to the garage, et cetera. But could you just speak briefly to the access to the building, parking facilities for vehicles? Because it looked like it was not on Harvard and not on Western Ave. You brought it to the side streets. And just also how trash management and some building servicing would occur. Does that happen in the garage? If you could maybe just speak to that quickly and you might have to put the site plan back up.
Sure. If you'd like to put the site plan up, you can. In the meantime, the vehicles enter on Travis Street. So, the street that runs north, south between Western and Bertram. And that's also generally the location of where trash is is managed, is coming out to the street for pickup.
And those are all two way streets, Travis and Bertram?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Hearing none, any public testimony?
Yeah, John Cusack, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and Commissioners. My name is John Cusack. I live at 186 Washington Street in Brighton. I wanted to basically say how much I appreciate the fact that the project's in compliance with WAC-RZ and that construction mitigation was considered as part of the building's foundation design. I like the North Harvard Promenade and I really love the massing and the design of this project. It evolved a great deal of community input over the last four years and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Minor, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members, Commissioners, and Mind Upper East, representing hundreds of Indian carpenters that live and work for the city of Boston. I had the pleasure to be before you to testify in support of this project. And I will say it again, kudos to Peter from Samuels and his team. This project has been kicked around for a while. And I can tell you that in the past few years, we possibly had over 100 projects that were approved and have not moved forward. And we all know the great need of housing in the city of Boston. I am quite confident that Samuels Associates, not only they have a long good history with us, but also they're capable and well off. And I'm sure this project will be moving forward. With that, with great respect, we ask you to kindly consider a vote on the affirmative in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mana.
Okay, Paula, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Paula Alexander. My address is 226 North Harvard Street in Alston. I'm within the abutis boundary. I'm about 50 feet from Bertram Street. And I oppose this project in terms of the rezoning that is proposed. Because it's so close to our residential homes, this will be a tremendous disruption to our quality of life. Our homes are only 35, 38 feet, two family. And to have this humongous apartment building right on top of us is very unfair. Beginning, you know, when we first started meeting on this project, the proponent waited until they received the new zoning. And that's not fair to us because nobody really took into consideration what this will do to our quality of life. We will have, starting with the demolition, you know, Samuels let the properties, the properties on the site deteriorate. They did nothing to improve them really for so many years. It looks like it looks now because they left it vacant. And their current building, Continuum One, they have Trader Joe's.
30 seconds, Paula.
They just opened a new restaurant and the rest of the retail is empty. It's been empty since day one. The zoning, you know, is so unfair to the residential abutis. I just ask for your help, please, please, to make the building come down in height and open up the real space they describe as not real open space to us.
Thank you, Paula.
We're faced with high, high concrete and creating island. Thank you. Please, help.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff. At this point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing after our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We approve MAP amendment application number 783, Plan Development Area number 154, 180 Western Ave, MAP 7B7D, Alston-Brighton Neighborhood District.
Motion second. Any discussions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call. Joe Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Michael Demela?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Not here.
David Ma?
Yes.
Drew Lef?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.